I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you would please stand as the Wildcat Company Naval Junior ROTC cadets present our colors and then we'll lead in the pledge to the flag.
Halt. Left. Face. Attention. Halt. Preusing. Halt.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attention. Halt. 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 Halt.
And you may be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. And the agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. That will be our good news, a lot of good things going on in our schools as we've now been in school for over two weeks, two weeks and one day, to be exact. So, a lot of great things going on, we're gonna hear a couple of those things. Ms. McLean, we'll start with you.
Okay, I have good news from Willowbrook Elementary. They received a $1,000 donation from Tennessee Tool and Engineering for Staff Leadership Awards. Willowbrook staff are so thankful for our community partners. Also, first grade teacher Meredith Whitehead Cave entertained the audience prior to Oppenheimer, the Trinity event on July 19th. It was a wonderful event showcasing our Oak Ridge High School students and the Oppenheimer documentary. Adfac provided filled bags for Willowbrook students to start off the year. CNS delivered them to the building. Mrs. Bruce and Mrs. Gleason from the Oak Ridge Schools Family Resource Center would like to thank our local Rack Room Shoes for once again collecting donations for Shoes That Fit program. This program provides shoes for students who need them throughout the year and during the Oak Ridge Schools Angel Tree Project. The NAACP Back to School Event was a huge success. We were able to meet with some of our families, provide school supplies, and share important information parents needed to ensure the first day of school was a success. And finally, Knoxville Television Station WBIR visited Willowbrook to kick off the first day of school. I saw that coverage and it was great.
Thank you. Ms. Webb.
All right, good news from Robertsville. The RMS Technology Student Association competed at the 2023 TSA National Competition in Louisville, Kentucky on June 28 through July 2nd. They represented RMS and the Oak Ridge Schools very well. There were 48 states and two countries represented for a total of 3,500 members participating in STEM events. RMS had 15 students competing in 18 events. Seven of those events moved on to the semifinals. Five events competing, oh, I'm sorry, five events made the top 10 and one received second place for digital photography. For those unfamiliar with TSA, making it into semifinals is exceptional, but making it to the national level is not a small challenge. All of our students showed professionalism and sportsmanship and we are very proud of them. That's from Robertsville.
And Dr. Borters, I'm gonna go next to you to tell us this briefly about our start to this school year and the two weeks and one day that we've been in school.
Yeah, heading into the third week here and we've been finding a lot of wood every time we say this, but it's been a fairly strong start for us and I can't thank the administrators in this room enough and the teacher leaders in the building. Things happen and their flexibility and their willingness to do whatever it takes for our students and families is so much appreciated. But no, we've had a great start. We've had a lot of, some new things and those things are going well. This is typically a day at a storm into the, into our afternoon, but we added preschool to our transportation routes, but I've been hearing it wasn't too late, too bad this afternoon despite the storm as well. But, but no, it's been a great start and just wanna thank this team and our teacher leaders for doing what it takes for our children and families.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Next, we move to the public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you choose to address the board. You will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium, sign in your address and your name, and then state your name and address for the board. At that time, your three minutes will start. Is there anyone who wishes to address? Yes, sir.
My name is David Wallace. I live on 102 Cross Creek Place. I've got a couple items I would like the board to consider and it's specific to the zero policy, well, I'll just read my comments probably a little bit easier, zero tolerance offenses. This is for consideration for the board. So, currently, the Pupil Services Director has the authority to judge, convict, and sentence our children to a one-year out-of-school expulsion without any hard evidence. I am recommending a complete independent review of the DHA and that additional evidence must be obtained as testing of the substance, the child for drug use in order to obtain hard evidence. Our children need to have, my recommendation would be our children need to have an advocate or legal counsel provided at these hearings. And, now, let's see, I've got one, oh, I've got one minute, two minutes, okay. The hearings are more than just an appeals process to be in place. Additional community oversight is required. The other point and related to the zero tolerance of illegal drugs, this past year, school year 2022 and 2023, our children were judged, convicted, and sentenced to a one-year expulsion without any hard proof. In fact, many of them was using HHC, not THC. Since HHC was a legal product and not considered a drug until Governor Lee signed a law recently to such effect, I'm requesting that all of our children that did not have any hard evidence against them in this use of THC versus HHC, that their school record be cleared of any wrongdoing. That's basically my two recommendations. I don't know if you have questions or need me to clarify, but I've got two, two of those points.
I don't see any from the board. We have the information that you've just presented. I see the board has taken notes on that, so I appreciate your comments and thank you for coming to the board meeting tonight.
I still got 28 seconds? So, will I get any follow-up? Will there be any, I did send an email last Friday to all of you, to the board, so will there be any follow-up or anything or is this, I'm just trying to figure out what the next step possibly would be?
After the board, generally, after the board has taken into consideration your requests, that would be an opportunity then for the superintendent and I to meet, to discuss those requests, and at that point in time, there will be, would be follow-up, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're gonna move into items for action and the board is gonna be dealing with a number of policies tonight. I would like to point out, in all of these policies that we're gonna be dealing with, these policies come as a result of legislation that took place in the most recent legislative session. These are not items that the board has gone in and said, "Well, we need to make this change." These are items that we must legally now make the changes in our policies to be within the law. So, that's what we're gonna do. So, we'll start out with item A is Board Policy 1.102. Board Members, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.102, Board Members.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borters.
Public Chapter 114 requires acceptance of GED, HSET, and other types of high school equivalency credentials approved by the State Board of Education. We've updated our policy to include these and other types of credentials in accordance with state law.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is Board Policy 1.106, Code of Ethics, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.106, Code of Ethics.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borters.
A new change to state law, Public Chapter 37 requires local boards of education to notify the Tennessee Ethics Commission of the primary person responsible for administering and enforcing their ethical standards. We've added language in Policy 1.106 on this practice indicating that myself or my designee will serve as the point of contact for the Tennessee Ethics Commission.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item C is Board Policy 1.400, School Board Meetings, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.400, School Board Meetings.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borters.
Public Chapter 350 creates additional opportunities for board members to attend board meetings electronically. Now, board members will be able to use this method of attendance for two additional reasons. One, if they are sick or in a period of convalescence on the advice of a healthcare professional, and two, due to inclement weather. So, we've made those additions to this policy.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, Board Policy 1.402, Notification of Meetings and Policy, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.402, Notification of Meetings and Policy.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borters.
State law, Public Chapter 300 now requires that notice of board meetings include information on how individuals may provide public comment on agenda items. Additionally, each board members, each board meeting will, with actionable items on the agenda, is required to have a time dedicated to public comment. The law allows boards to establish reasonable restrictions on the length of the comment period, number of speakers, and the length of the time per speaker. So, this is really the 1.402 and I gave you a little bit of summary for 1.404.
Comments or questions? Just a comment, I think it's interesting that in a lot of these policies that, like this one and the ones we're gonna be dealing with, we've already been doing. So, we were, you know, they should, the legislators should have just called us and said, "What do you all do?"
Yep, absolutely, best practice.
And that might've saved some time. Other que, any questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item A, Board Policy 1.404, Appeals and Appearances Before the Board, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 1.404, Appeals to and Appearances Before the Board.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borters.
Individuals desiring to appear before the board must submit a written request to the superintendent two weeks before the meeting. Previously, in this policy, it was a one-week timeframe.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, Board Policy 3.202, Emergency Preparedness Plan, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 3.202, Emergency Preparedness Plan.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borters.
And I'm gonna summarize, this is kinda the next three, so I'm gonna just give a summary of the next three policy changes here. A new law that affects many aspects of school safety, Public Chapter 367, requires several policy changes. This new legislation requires an armed and tutored drill, an incident command drill, and an emergency safety bus drill. That's in Policy 3.202, as well as a policy on threat assessment teams, Policy 3.204. Many boards currently maintain a policy on threat assessment teams, however, this new legislation requires that all boards have a policy on this topic. There's also now a requirement for all exterior doors to remain locked during school hours. For events occurring after school hours, boards can choose to create a local plan on how to admit community members. We've updated Policy 3.205 with information about the default practice found in the new legislation. Per state law, this default practice will be in effect if the board does not include an alternate local plan. So, that's for the next three policies.
Mr. Lay, you might, could you, this kinda ties in with this, bring us up to date. I know there was an amount of money set aside in the budget for additional SRO officers in the schools. Could you kinda bring us up to date maybe on that?
Yes, sir. I was notified today by Captain Tefford and the city did earn or was approved for the School Resource Officer Grant, which is $575,000. So, that's basically $75,000 for each campus with the exception of the preschool. So, they have already provided two additional school resource officers and they are splitting their day between Glenwood and Woodland and the second officer is splitting his day between Willowbrook and Linden. They have other officers who are interested in becoming SRO officers, but they will have to wait until they get some cadets out of the academy to replace those gentlemen or officers on the road. So, so they're working just as quickly as they can to basically have an SRO in each of our buildings and Captain Tefford made this comment that they would not put an SRO in our building that did not have experience. So, that's why we're waiting for the new officers to come from the academy, they'll put them on the road, and they'll put the experienced officers in our buildings.
And if I remember correctly, all of that is great news. The only downside of that, if I'm, and I might be wrong here, correct me please if I am, is that this funding is only good for this coming year. Is that, that is correct? There's no specific, to my, there's no specification that this will continue after this year unless it's added into the next budget.
In one of my conversations, it was suggested they felt this would continue. The $200,000 grant for school safety is the one that is one year. So, I think we're okay with the SROs, but I will review that, but, but, but I think I'm being, I think I'm correct on that.
I believe, now that you say that, I believe that is correct. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, we're on, even though we've talked about three policies, we're just getting ready to deal with 3.202, Emergency Preparedness Plan, a first and second reading. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Move then to Item G, Board Policy 3.204, Threat Assessment Team, also a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 3.204, Threat Assessment Team.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any additional comments from the board or questions? Ms. McLean.
I was wondering on this threat assessment team, would our new countywide Homeland Security officer, would we include him on, him or her on that or?
Mr. Lay, describe the team and the process that we're using.
At this time, the answer to that would be if we felt the threat was credible or the assessment team decided that basically this, this was a high-risk threat and we needed to bring more people in. The SRO will always be made aware of these things that are going on and once again would also assist us in determining would we share that with Homeland Security. This came at a very good time for us. Actually, a few years ago, Mr. Scott and Dr. Burr actually put together a document that we use district-wide basically to assess students who made threats or did things that were concerning. They would assist our staffs as needed to address these concerns. Just a few weeks ago, actually, a threat assessment team from every school went to training with Ms. Callie Painter and they were trained to basically do the assessments themselves, so we now have a team in every building. They will continue to assist each other as needed. Any threat assessment that is completed, whether, whether it is found to be a valid threat or not, low risk, high risk, however you look at that, that will be shared with Ms. Painter, that will be placed on a database, will be shared with Dr. Borters monthly. We'll have two copies, one will have student names, one will not, and Dr. Borters will share the document with our student names with the board. So, so we feel like we're really in a good place and of course, this is a new policy, but, but we have a new administrative procedure, so we're, we feel like we're in a good place to be compliant and once again, take the steps necessary to address threats with fidelity.
At the TSBA Summer Law, they talked about the Safe TN app where people can call, can submit tips. Have we gotten any reports from that Safe TN app?
We have, we have advertised that app for several years now. I know at least two, possibly three. To my knowledge, we have never received a tip from that online reporting app, but once again, you did, you have reminded me, I'm not sure we have advertised that this year, so I'll get with Ms. Molly and we'll make sure we get that out there, so. So, Ms. Lauren Dean, you're shaking your head. To the microphone, please.
Wait a minute now, if you can be on local television, you can get up here at this pub. Well, but he was dressed up and we couldn't recognize him at that time.
So, are you talking about the ASAP, the one from ASAP of Anderson County?
No, there's actually, there's actually an online reporting app with the state, which is what Ms. McLean is, is speaking to.
Okay, 'cause we have the one P3 and that's the one we use. Is that one still active?
That one is still active, but the one from the state is too. I would say we advertise, have advertised it yearly, but I'm not confident we have advertised it this year, so, so we will, we will make sure that happens.
Perfect, yes. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some things will never be forgotten, right, Ms. Lauren Dean, about the bear? Any other good questions? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving next to 3.205, Security, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 3.205, Security.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borters.
And again, this is about the closed exterior doors. We are, we're doing the default policy right now. I have a feeling this policy will be back in front of the board once we have a little bit more time to work with Mr. McCarty and to look at what other people are doing for these localized plans, but I think there's gonna need to be some extra situations and strategies put in here, but we wanted to pass the default plan tonight.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving next to Board Policy 4.300, Extracurricular Activities, a first and second reading. Dr. Borters.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 4.300, Extracurricular, Extracurricular Activities.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? There's, look, there's only four of us. Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borters.
So, this policy and the two after it are all connected, so I'm gonna go ahead and give a summary.
give a summary for all three of these policies again. Public Chapter 353 includes new options for parents, guardians regarding certain extracurricular activities and district actions. Specifically, this new law in 4.300 requires parents and guardians to opt-in before their minor child joins a school club or participates in the activities of a club. In 6.4001 requires parents and guardians to also opt-in before a minor child participates in a non-instructional survey, analysis, or evaluation. And then in 6.402 gives parents, guardians the ability to opt-out of health screenings conducted as part of the Coordinated School Health Program. To align with these changes, we've updated the respective policies on these topics.
Comments or questions? Can, Ms. Agel?
Well, just a comment, I found it interesting that they ruled out a whole lot of things that students could be tracked on, but one of them was not body mass index, because that's one that I think schools probably shouldn't be messing with. But they eliminated that and they canceled everything else.
Question, can someone explain what we're doing or what we will be doing in regard to the opt-in and the opt-outs? How are we going to handle, how are we handling that?
Okay, well, the first one, as far as, are you speaking clubs or the other?
Let's do clubs first.
Okay. Basically, principals, we're instructed, we have an administrative procedure that no one, no student can, may participate in a club unless there is written permission from the parent. The only meeting that would happen, there may be just a brief, two minutes after school, here's, here's the document, or here's the piece of paper that tells you what the name of the club is, what the club will be doing, the days we will meet, things like that. They may hand that to a student, but there will be no actual club meeting until we have a signed permission slip from a parent or a guardian. So we're doing that for all school clubs and we will do that annually from this point forward. And the club sponsor will maintain those permission slips and if we ever have a concern, principals will request those permission slips from that club sponsor. So that's how we are addressing the clubs at this time, so. Questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
Can they, can a parent send an email or does it have to be a form completed? I just, I hate this, because we are asking our teachers to do clubs and spend extra time and now we're making it more complicated for them and I, I don't like this, but I understand why we have to do it, but I don't like it.
Right, and I personally had the same thought, that people who are given their time and extra, then we're having them do another task, but I feel confident we would accept that if a parent were to scan that and email that to us and that would be fine, so. But you know what, also, at the same time, as we look at it, it removes, you know, any, any concern, should that student be in that club or not, so. But in, in, I think, in speaking with principals, we've not had a lot of pushback, you know, it was concerning at first when teachers first heard that, but then, once again, as you suggested, they're committed to doing that, so we will overcome this obstacle and we'll get it done. Okay.
I'd like to pursue Ms. McLean's comment just a little farther. And if we can, in fact, accept emails, and I guess we need to hear from Chris McCarty on the legality of doing that, but if we can accept emails for that purpose, I think that's a good idea and I think we ought to need to make that known, that that can take place, if Chris thinks that's something we should be able to do.
Yes, I'll speak with Mr. McCarty in the morning. If he gives that approval, we will send that out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we're voting on Board Policy 4.3. Let me, before we do that, let's opt, you thought, I almost forgot, let's talk about the other opt-outs.
Yes, sir. We have been working, really working with Mr. McCarty. Callie Painter has taken the lead in this, along with Marsha Wade, and we have just basically mentioned every scenario. Okay, we send this, you know, students participate in this survey, this survey, that survey. We have our physicals and our, and our, you know, all the things that we do and, and we have discussed those with Mr. McCarty and, and he has said this will require permission, this will require permission. So we're currently looking at basically creating a document to send home to parents and it would list the multiple things that we would need permission with. You know, for instance, you know, every year you have from ASAP of Indy, or ASAP of Anderson County, it's just a good survey and it tells us what's happening in our community with our students, so things such as that will be listed, some of the things for our social, emotional learners, anyway, all of that will be listed and basically that will be where a parent can sign and basically they can check if there's anything that they would not want their child to participate with. So we're, we're close, but we're still finalizing that just a little bit, so, but we're trying to, you know, do it in a manner that, once again, a parent won't be contacted multiple times and also schools won't be sending home this documentation multiple times, so we can make sure we do it correctly, so.
I don't want to get in the weeds with this, but I'm going to ask this question anyway. If I were still teaching civics and in my class, I wanted to do, and I'm going to call it a survey, of my students wanting to ask them, do you, if you were 18, I'm just going to pick three questions. If you were 18, would you vote? If you were voting, which presidential candidate would you vote for? And third, do you classify yourself as a Democrat, Republican, or other? Do I have to send something home to get that approved?
If the survey aligns with the curriculum in which you are teaching, the answer is no. So if that's your curriculum, you would be in good shape, sir.
That's what, kind of what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, you're welcome.
Now we're going to vote on Board Policy 4.300 Extracurricular Activities. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. And now we're going to deal with Board Policy 6.4001 Student Surveys, Analysis, and Evaluations, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.4001 Student Surveys, Analysis, and Evaluations.
Per the superintendent's recommendation. Motion passes unanimously. Board Policy, item K, Board Policy 6.402 Physical Examinations and Immunizations, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.402 Physical Examinations and Immunizations.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
Again, this just gives parents and guardians the ability to opt-out of health screenings conducted as part of the Coordinated School Health Program.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item L, Board Policy 5.302 Sick Leave, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 5.302 Sick Leave.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
For districts that operate sick leave banks, state law contains restrictions on how those days can be used by employees. Public Chapter 151 adds additional options for employees by creating an option to use this time for care for minor children in addition to being used for the employer's own, employee's own illness.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean.
Do we have a lot of staff that are participating in the sick leave bank?
I don't have the number right off the top of my head. Mr. Bradburn, do you have any idea how many, approximately?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And since Ms. Agel and I serve on the sick leave bank, over the past couple of years, we've taken a look at this policy and the potential where it could have so few members that it could be and not, it could not exist, because there would not be enough days put in there, and looked at ways to increase the participation, but it is a voluntary participation and even though there have been teacher meetings, teacher presentations on this topic, the increase in participants seems to be going down as opposed to going up. I, and I don't know the reason for that, whether it's just people don't want to do it, people are more inclined to try to hold on to their sick days, and I just don't know, but it, it is in decline and the potential does exist that if we don't have enough people as participants, that it won't self-sustain itself. And with this addition, that may make it even more difficult.
We, we've discussed that very fact, yes.
Yep. Okay, Board Policy 5.302 Sick Leave, please cast your vote. Moving on next to Board Policy 6.202 Homeschools, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.202 Homeschools.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
Public Charter 114 requires the acceptance of GED, HSET, and other types of high school equivalency credentials approved by the State Board of Education. We've updated our policy to include these other types of credentials in accordance with state law. Additionally, Public Chapter 296 removes the requirement that parents of homeschool students provide proof of immunizations. Based on these changes, we've updated our policy in line with the new requirements.
I apologize for asking this next question. It's kind of one of those questions I might have should have asked before, but explain to me or refresh my memory on our policy in regard to a person who's homeschooled and their ability to also attend a school in our building.
Yes, basically, at the time, that the homeschool has to be recorded with People's Services. So basically, the individual, the parent would contact Dr. Henderson and they would document that they are a homeschool family. At that time, if there is a course or an activity that one of their children would want to participate in, they would request that at that time. And basically, if we have room, we have seats in that classroom, or we have room with that club or organization, athletics, whatever the case might be, basically, then it would normally be approved. But homeschool students do have the ability to participate, usually those, you know, harder courses, things that can't be very easily duplicated at home, but we do have homeschool students who are playing athletics with us at this time, so, so we have different requests.
So it does hinge on room?
Yes, sir, it does, it does hinge on room, yes.
Ms. McLean.
I would assume that there would be a behavioral good citizen requirement also?
That is an excellent question, but we've never crossed that path. We've never had a person who requested to basically be in a class or be on an athletic team that has been a discipline issue at any level, so, so yes, I would assume if that were the case, then we could basically take the appropriate steps, but glad to report that has never been an issue to this point.
Ms. Webb.
So just to be clear, we require that our students are vaccinated, but we allow outside students in that are not vaccinated?
Unfortunately, I think the answer is yes.
And we don't make the laws a lot of times, we just follow them, unfortunately.
Yes, Mr. Philauer, and Mrs. Agel had her hand up. Was that the same question? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Board Policy 6.202 Homeschools, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item N, Board Policy 6.300 Code of Conduct and Policy, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.300 Code of Conduct and Policy.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I'm going to tie this policy and the very next one together. A new zero tolerance offense has been added to state law. Public Chapter 299 adds threats of mass violence to the list of offenses punishable by a one-year expulsion. We've revised our policies 6.300 and 6.309 to reflect that information.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Board Policy 6.300 Cut of Code of Conduct and Policy, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Then on to item O, Board Policy 6.309 Zero Tolerance Offenses, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
No other information, just the same change with adding threats of mass violence to that list.
Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item P, Board Policy 6.319 Alternative Education, first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.319 Alternative Education.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
Public Chapter 279 provides an additional statutory reason that a superintendent could require a student to serve a suspension at home rather than on school property. This change to state law allows the superintendent discretion if assigning the student to an alternative school or program may endanger the safety of the students and staff.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item Q, Board Policy 6.405 Medicines, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.405 Medicines.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
A physician must complete the Form ORS-191 Authorization Form for Prescription Medications and also for any non-prescription medication that's given at a different dose than the package recommendations. ORS-191 Authorization Form, Authorization Form must be received for the use of prescription drugs, inhalants, over-the-counter drugs, eye drops, creams, ointments that are to be administered at school or during a field trip.
Comments or questions? Ms. Agel.
I realize that we have to do this to be compliant with state law, but I still. I realize that we have to do this to be compliant with state law, but I still have concerns that some of these, and I'm going to say an inhalant for a student who has asthma, can be a problem. If a child has an asthma attack, they need that inhaler right now, not 10 minutes later when they can get to the nurse.
It's my hope that those processes are all filled out, completed at the beginning of the year, so those are all ready for that student.
Well, but the student is not allowed to carry them. They have to stay with the nurse, so they don't have the time to walk down to the nurse's office and get it without it getting markedly worse in some cases.
Other comments? Board Policy 6.405, Medicines, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item R, Chief, thank you for being patient. Oak Ridge High School Navy Junior ROTC Field Trip to Normandy, France. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ORHS Navy JROTC Field Trip to Normandy, France to participate in the D-Day Memorial Parade in June of '24.
Per the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
This would be an amazing event. We did come before the board early with this, and the trip was off, but now it's back on, and having a chance to march in the D-Day Memorial Parade would be something for our students. But Chief is here if there's any other, any other questions.
I know the board has seen your itinerary and all of that stuff, but just briefly for those who are listening, or for the people in the press that are recording, give us an overview of what this will entail, if you don't mind.
We will actually spend, I think it is, four days in Normandy. We'll get to see a lot of the, a lot of the historical sites relating, you know, to the, to the Normandy invasion. Since it is the 80th anniversary, I believe they are expecting close to a million people in the Normandy area during this.
How many?
It was told to me that the projection is about a million people that'll be in attendance there. So it's something special. We march in the 80th anniversary of the Pearl Harbor Parade in '21, so this is pretty, pretty cool. So on the backside of the Normandy, touring Normandy and all of the significant sites, we'll actually get, I think it's two nights in Paris on the back end, and we'll fly back out of Paris coming back. The trip, the duration of the trip is we'll fly out of Knoxville June 3, and we'll depart Paris back for home on the 11th of June. So I think right now, I project our group size to be somewhere 45 or less.
Questions from the board? Thank you. Ms. McLean would like to go as long as she doesn't have to march.
She'd be my carry-on. It's going to be an awesome trip.
Yeah, it will be, and those who will be participating, it'll be an experience of a lifetime.
I was telling Ms. McLean before this, I'm excited. Mr. Livis is going to be my chaperone, one of my chaperones again, and his dad landed at Utah Beach a couple of days after the initial invasion, so this is going to be extremely special for him. And I'm just, I'm proud that he's going to get the opportunity to go with us, and it's going to mean something special for him, so.
Absolutely. Again, thank you for your willingness to make this happen. We appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys, very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. We move on next to item S, Oak Ridge High School Orchestra and Band Field Trip to Orlando, Florida. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ORHS Orchestra and Band Field Trip to Orlando, Florida in March of '24.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
As you can see there from the attachment, it's a music festival slash assessment down in Orlando. It looks like they'll be doing that over spring break.
Comment your questions. And if I'm not mistaken, I think this is one of the events they have attended, or the band, or the orchestra, or maybe both have attended in the past.
They have, and it's been a combination, one or the other or both, but yes, they've done that several times, and it's during spring break, so.
The motion is approval of the orchestra, Oak Ridge High School Orchestra and Band Field Trip to Orlando, Florida. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item T, Increase of a .68 TA Position to a .75 TA Position at Woodland Elementary School. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of an increase of a .68 TA Position to a .75 TA Position at Woodland Elementary.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
This change is being recommended so we can avoid some scheduling and timekeeping difficulties, and should make it easier to hire this position.
Questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item U, Addition of a 1.0 Kindergarten Teacher at Willowbrook Elementary. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the addition of a 1.0 kindergarten teacher at Willowbrook Elementary.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
And as you can see from the attachment, this item and the very next item are all due to enrollment. We had kind of a hotspot at Willowbrook as we looked at it a few weeks back, and this will definitely help out that K-3 ratio at Willowbrook Elementary.
Comment your questions from the board. Ms. McLean?
I'm really glad that we were able to anticipate this before school started, so it didn't cause all of that drama that happens after, after school starts. So, good, good planning.
And just want to brag on our administrators and Mr. Thacker and our maintenance department. We made this decision, I think, late on a Thursday, and they even worked on Saturday. So Friday, Saturday, that classroom was set up, ready to go before we opened school Monday morning. So, and once again, for the sole purpose of not disrupting or moving students.
Please cast your vote on the addition of a 1.0 kindergarten teacher at Willowbrook. Motion passes unanimously. Item V, Increase of a .75 TA Position to a 1.0 TA Position at Willowbrook Elementary School. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the increase of .75 TA to a 1.0 TA Position at Willowbrook Elementary.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
And again, due to the enrollment increase and the increase of a full-time teacher, moving this to a 1.0 is going to be much more helpful and probably get a much better candidate pool.
Comment your questions. Please cast your vote on this motion. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item W. FY24 Preschool CACFP Food Grant Application. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 Preschool CACFP Grant Application.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
Again, the preschool has used this grant in the past, and it provides breakfast, lunch, and a snack each day for all preschool students. The grant's not prepared for a set amount, it's on a reimbursement basis only.
Comment your questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item X, FY24 Preschool Voluntary Pre-K Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 Preschool Voluntary Pre-K Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, you earlier passed this, and we didn't quite have the grant number at that time, so we had to go back and make some changes and ask and submit responses to five questions for the state, so it's now back in front of you again. The amount now entered into E-Plan for the grant is $455,414.19.
Comment your questions. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item Y, Purchase of Monitors and Docking Stations for Classroom Instruction. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the purchase of monitors and docking stations to update teacher workstations and to increase instructional technology capacity in grades five through 12.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers?
And as it says there, this just gives the teachers more opportunities to increase their instructional technology capacity and spending down the majority of our ESAR funds with this purchase.
Comment your questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Have we ever had a Z?
Yeah.
We have?
We've gone around, yeah.
We've gone past Z? Oh, that's right, we have. We sure have. I thought we might be setting the record. No, we haven't. You're right. All right. Moving on to items for information, items for discussion. Hearing none, any old business? Any new business? Communications. Mr. Collinney and I talked earlier. We've talked about some ideas on what we might do this coming year with our focus on education, which we will continue to do so. Some ideas for this, for spicing up the show, if you will, a little bit. So we'll be talking about that. He and I'll be talking about that a little bit more, and I'll get some ideas from each of you all, and we'll work on a schedule for that coming up soon. Some dates, our first school visit is this month, August the 23, at 7:30 a.m. at the preschool. Then on August the 28, will be our next board meeting. And then on August the 29, we will be attending our Fall District Meeting, at which our high school nominee, can I go ahead and say this? I'm going to say it anyway. I'm probably not supposed to say this until they officially announce it, but what are they going to do to me?
You're the chairman.
I'm the chairman. I can say it if I want. Our high school nominee got selected as the East District Student of the Year. So he will be recognized at the Fall District. He will then go on to participate with eight others across the state for the state Student of the Year, and so we're excited about that and looking forward to having him and his family with us on that night. And Anderson County is actually hosting the Fall District, and you may have gotten notification that it's not going to be at Anderson County High School, but the facility it's going to be in is actually right behind Anderson County High School. So we're actually kind of going to the same location. And I think we agreed to meet here and
Absolutely.
travel, so we'll do that. All right. Dr. Borchers, anything else?
No, we've had, like I said, we've had a great start and just glad to have our students back in the building. It feels good.
Anything from the board? Thank each of you all for taking your time tonight and being with us. Dave, have your counter going back there so we'll know if those, we'll reach a record of a million people again watching us this year. We hope for that as well. We're excited about this school year, as Dr. Borchers alluded to. Just a lot of great things already going on in our buildings. Excited teachers, excited students. Just looking forward to getting into the buildings and seeing those things in person. And again, giving our students the opportunity to be successful, giving every one of our students the opportunity to be successful, and that's what we hope will occur every year with each student. Scott and Dave, thank you all for keeping us on the air. Lynn and Melissa, thank you all tonight for keeping us in line, and we stand adjourned.